Sanish, you will be admitting the participants, correct?
Yeah, done, sir.
Hello, good evening everybody.
Good morning, Dr. Radhakrishnan.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, how are you keeping?
Good, good.
Yeah, yeah, how are you?
Doing well, we are busy actually. We are busy, all the hospitals. Yeah.
Hello, Sanish.
Yes, sir.
Shall I back off?
Yeah, yeah, no problem, sir.
Yeah.
Good day, sir.
Good evening and welcome you all to Ether Day festivities 2021, wherever you are. Friends, wish you all pleasant remembrance of Ether Day. We anesthesiologists all over the world are put in challenges during this pandemic times. And to an appreciable extent, we are able to safeguard the health of our citizens. Hope our humanitarian efforts will continue and we may become more functional as well as capable in coming months. Science of anesthesia has progressed very rapidly in the last 175 years, even at under-upped countries, and we look forward to further developments as branching of our STEM areas in the science of anesthesia to multi-targeted healthcare advancements. Hope this will realize the next two decades. Wishing you all the very best in your career. Thank you.
To be talking to my fellow colleagues on this important day, the World Anesthesia Day. History of anesthesia is rich, varied, and full of sacrifice. Since the pre-anesthesia days that finally culminated on 16th October 1846 with the greatest achievement of William T. D. Morton during historic demonstration after he administered anesthesia to a patient, Edward Gilbert Abbott, for destruction of neck tumor. The surgeon, Colin Warren, at Wolfens Amphitheater at Massachusetts General Hospital declared gentleman is no humbug and there is complete control of surgical pain. This place has now been added to the roster of National Historical Landmark. Since this historical success, anesthesiologists have become an important member of surgical team controlling pain and keeping the patient safe and comfortable during the entire perioperative field. WSA in 1903 has arranged special events to celebrate this remarkable day as a significant event in the history of the medical faculty. They also declared that we fall much short of the anesthesia target which is required and is five per 100 million, 100,000 patients and should resolve on this very day of celebrations to achieve the desired target, that's the purpose of our special. Wishing you all a very, very happy World Anesthesia Day. Long live anesthesia special.
I am sending my best wishes and greetings to all the members of ICA on World Anesthesia Day, which is also known as Ether Day because ether was accepted as a true anesthetic on this day. I have experience in using ether in my early days of anesthesia training and use simple methods like open ether, flag scan, EMO, ether inhaler, and points vaporizer. That with ether anesthesia is very rare and it is a safe anesthetic, doesn't cause liver damage and sympathetic stimulation counters the depressive action on cardiovasculature system and it's a very good analgesic. It went out of use because of its explosive nature and the surgeons of the day, they all use diaphragm. I once again wish to the ICA good luck and great progress. Thank you.
On behalf of the Indian College of Anesthesiologists, I would like to convey my best wishes on the World Anesthesia Day, which is being celebrated all over the globe today, the 16th of October. After the demonstration of ether anesthesia in Massachusetts General Hospital in 1846, painless surgery was possible. Since then, anesthesia techniques have advanced so much that there was no looking back. Now surgeries are done, all advanced surgeries as well as very morbid patients are taken up with least morbidity post-operatively. On this day, we fellow anesthesiologists strive for better patient care. Long live the anesthesiologist fraternity.
My dear colleagues and friends, I am greatly delighted to greet you on the occasion of World Anesthesia Day. 175 years ago, ether anesthesia was successfully demonstrated and was declared no humbug, which is absolutely true. Since then, anesthesia has embraced technological advancements to cater to innumerable types of surgery, procedures irrespective of age, comorbid states, and physical status of a given subject. Now, the Indian College of Anesthesiologists, which was established in 2008, is committed to train the young aspirants in preparing for the next generation, putting down guidelines and protocols for the safe patient care in the OR, intensive care units, and other places. The Indian College of Anesthesiology is additionally committed to inculcate research and administrative skills of healthcare management in the youngsters. Thank you and warm regards.
Good evening, everybody. Respected seniors, friends, and colleagues. I am Dr. Sanish, coordinator, ICA academics. I would like to pass on my greetings on this auspicious occasion of World Anesthesia Day. I just want to say, be proud to be an anesthesiologist. Now it's time to proceed on to our special presentation segment, which will be chaired by our honourable honorary international dean, ICA, Dr. Kumar Balani from University of Minnesota, who is also pediatric anesthesiologist in chief. It's over to you, Dr. Kumar.
This is our second World Anesthesia Day with the Indian College of Anesthesiologists, and I thought it would be nice to discuss a topic that will be of great benefit to our pediatric patients. So we are going to be talking about the new NPO guidelines that are going to be of tremendous help to both pediatric patients and also satisfy the parents. So our first speaker is Dr. Bibi Elliott, who is an expert on this topic, and she is at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, the same place where I did my fellowship, and I'm glad that she's active on this topic. And she completed her fellowship there in 2012 and did her residency at the Johns Hopkins Hospital in 2011. Her primary interests are patient safety and using quality improvement to positively impact patient care. Dr. Elliott has served as the medical director for patient safety and QI for the General Anesthesia Division at CHOP. CHOP is Children's Hospital of Philadelphia for the past three years. She has been involved in numerous quality improvement initiatives and published work includes to how to decrease clear fluid fasting time for children prior to anesthesia. And over the last year, she has been a member of the European Society for Pediatric Anesthesiology, the Task Force on Pediatric Perioperative Fasting. So, Dr. Elliott, thank you for being here and presenting your talk, and you can now share your screen on your PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you for getting me. I'm gonna pull this up here, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
All right, perfect. So these are my goofy little kids, and I just wanted to show a little picture of them highlighting short and long fasting times. I do have no disclosures in regards to NPO times and I have no financial disclosures either. So we know why we make our patients NPO for surgery and for anesthesia. We've probably known this since even before we went to medical school and did our rotations in clinical anesthesia. So our reflexes are blunted with anesthesia. We know that aspiration of gastric contents can be fatal, but we also know that prolonged fasting time is not ideal either. So this can lead to hypoglycemia, hemodynamic changes, post-op nausea and vomiting, and even it can lead to increased pain scores. And frankly, we care about our patients, we want them to be comfortable, we want them to be satisfied. So I'm gonna start out with a little bit of history because the history of NPO times and studying aspiration in anesthesia starts a long way back. This is Hannah Greener. And Miss Greener in the 1800s was given chloroform as an anesthetic to remove a toenail by Dr. Meggison. She had the mask, which was essentially just a rag, applied to her face with a little bit of chloroform on it. And when Dr. Meggison thought that she was adequately anesthetized, he allowed the surgeon to begin the operation. She jerked and moved a little bit, and so he was going to put the mask, the rag back on her face, but she looked a little bit blanched, looked a little bit pale, and so he tried to revive her, he splashed water in her face. When that didn't work, he resorted to the resuscitation techniques of the 1840s, which is to say that he poured brandy and water down her throat to revive her. He tried to bleed her, but unfortunately she was dead within minutes, and on autopsy, they found that her lungs were congested. She had bloody froth on suctioning of the alveoli and her stomach was distended with food. So there's some controversy in regards to this. Some people think that Miss Greener had an overdose of chloroform, but to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. She reacted on incision. I think most likely what happened when they found that her stomach was distended with food, I think the evidence really points to her having an aspiration event and laryngospasm as a result of that. So this is kind of an interesting duo we have here. There were important insights into the clearance of gastric contents from this man on the left, Dr. William Beaumont, who was a Canadian military physician, and the young man on the right, who is Alexis St. Martin. And Mr. St. Martin was a Canadian fur trapper. He suffered a shotgun wound, which created a gastrocutaneous fistula, which he had for the duration of his life. He was unable to work at this point in time, so Dr. Beaumont took him in with promises to repair the gastrocutaneous fistula, but really what he did was perform experiments on the poor man. He found that water was cleared from this man's stomach almost immediately and food, including, you know, meat, et cetera, was cleared from the stomach within about six to eight hours. He published his observations in 1933, and this really forms the basis of our understanding of how components of what we eat are cleared from the stomach. Some of our first NPO recommendations come from surgeons. So this is Dr. Lister, and he did make the distinction that perhaps a cup of tea or beef broth, that doesn't sound very good to me as a vegetarian, but he made the recommendation that perhaps patients would do well with this about two hours prior to surgery. Here we have Dr. Winternitz, who described the pathology of aspiration. And what he did was, he basically infused varying strengths of acid into rabbit's lungs, and he found that the stronger the acid, the more quickly the animal suffered breathing issues and cardiac embarrassment ultimately leading to death. There was a good deal of fibrous exudate that was deposited within the lungs and red and white cells then came to fill up the alveoli thereafter. So now we arrive at semi-modern studies of aspiration. In 1946, Dr. Mendelson looked at 44,000 deliveries in a New York hospital and found that 66 women suffered aspiration events during anesthesia for their deliveries. Of these women, the contents of the aspiration were known in 45. Forty women had a liquid aspiration and five women had a solid aspiration with two of these women suffering death secondary to their aspiration. They ended up having food within their tracheobronchial tree and ended up dying. A couple points to note here though. Number one, most patients were fasted for surgery by this time. That's not all that surprising, but women presenting in labor were encouraged to eat a large meal at the onset of their labor and drink throughout the course of their labor to give them strength and stamina to endure however long it takes them to deliver a baby. The second point here is that at that point in time, anesthesia was delivered by an opaque face mask, where it was really hard to know if the patient had aspirated or vomited or something until well after the fact when they were already suffering respiratory issues. Dr. Mendelson described an aspiration syndrome here. So we have an asthma-like syndrome with cyanosis, tachycardia, wheeze, ral, ronchi, and progressive cardiac embarrassment, pulmonary edema, regardless of the previously normal condition of the heart. Mendelson's paper was really novel in that it recommended fasting times for partorians, and it encouraged the use of local anesthetics over general anesthesia for partorians. And in the conclusion of the paper, Dr. Mendelson makes a recommendation that we should have suction and we should know how to use a laryngoscope, and obviously, these are still two pertinent goals for any anesthesiologist. I borrowed this chart from Dr. Maltby, who had a really fantastic review of the history of anesthesia and specifically NPO times and aspiration in relation to anesthesia. And you can see that for quite a long time in the early history of recommendations, it's pretty liberal. Patients are allowed to eat and drink at a reasonable time prior to anesthesia, but in the 60s, things changed. People become increasingly concerned about aspiration and vomiting, and patients are made NPO at midnight. So with a new focus on aspiration, there were several advances in the field of anesthesia. We had the first reliable cuffed endotracheal tube come out around that time. We also had doctors Miller and Dr. McIntosh create their laryngoscope blades. Sexonal coline came into clinical practice in the 1950s, and I think, I'm not sure, but I think it's called seximethonium in India, but I could be wrong. In 1961, Dr. Selick published a paper regarding cricoid pressure to control regurgitation of stomach contents. And in 1963, we see the first report of rapid sequence induction to prevent aspiration for anesthesia. In the 1970s, we see this published paper by Doctors Roberts and Shirley, and they make a rather bold assessment here that 25 milliliters of gastric juice of pH below 2.5 in the stomach is sufficient to cause an aspiration syndrome in their patients. What this study was in was actually in rhesus macaques, basically in monkeys, and what they did was they infused 25 milliliters of strong acid into the monkey's lungs, and then they suffered a severe aspiration event. None of these monkeys had actually aspirated at all. They had not vomited, they had not aspirated, but they had had direct infusion of acid into their lungs. And this really struck a chord with anesthesiologists and really scared people into making sure that that stomach was as empty as possible. And this number, 25 milliliters, really sticks with us to date. But in the 80s, we started really challenging the paradigm. This is Charlie Cote, and he did a study in 1982 and found that in children, after inducing anesthesia and dropping a Salem sump into their stomachs at the critical pH, appeared to be less than 2.5% with volumes greater than 0.4 milliliters per kilo, which was quoted in the Roberts and Shirley paper. And he made this assessment based on the fact that most of the patients had volumes significantly greater than that 0.4 milliliters per kilo in their stomachs, and their acidity was significantly more than a pH of 2.5. So with that said, there were a number of other studies that happened during that time. In the late 80s, we see Dr. Sundar give patients up to 5 milliliters per kilo of pulp-free orange juice in addition to renitidine, and they found that patients had no higher gastric residual volume than the patients who were not given fluid to drink before the had no higher gastric residual volume than the patients who were not given fluid to drink before the procedure. He did find obviously that the patients that had received renitidine or the H two blocker did have a higher pH. But that was, that was sort of a secondary finding. Dr. Splinter gave patients three milliliters per kilo of apple juice, two and a half hours prior to anesthesia and found that fewer patients were really thirsty or hungry. And Dr. Shreiner from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia found that giving up to eight ounces of clear beverage two to three hours prior to anesthesia was unlikely to affect volume of gastric contents. Or the percentage of patients with a pH less than two point five. And it may actually provide psychological benefit. So in the same issue of anesthesiology where Dr. Shreiner published his results, Dr. Cote called for us to courageously reevaluate NPO times in children. On the heels of this and in relation to a number of other studies in the adult population, the ASA formed a task force and came out with the first guidelines for fasting in nineteen ninety-nine. These are the guidelines that we know and love, two, four, six, eight clears. Breast milk. Light meals and then heavy meals. They also came out with updates to the guidelines in two thousand eleven and two thousand seventeen. And they really didn't make any fundamental changes other than to make formula more restrictive to six hours of fasting time for formula. But the beauty of the recommendations is that there was room for modification and revision based on the evolution of medical knowledge, which was happening at an alarming rate. So what are we driving at with NP rule, NPO rules? And what, what is safety? What are we looking at here? And what we're looking at here is aspiration. We want to define aspiration. It's not just vomiting because I would, I would venture to say that most of us have actually had a patient vomit during anesthesia. But for us to actually see vomiting with aspiration and severe pulmonary or respiratory issues after the procedure is pretty rare. So it has to be not only witnessed vomiting or secretions. It has to have some degree of respiratory issue. And you may want to consider even getting radiologic studies. So we want to balance our safety with satisfaction. This is Mick Jagger, of course, with the Rolling Stones, who knows all about satisfaction. And we have a number of studies coming out really in the last ten years or so that show that there is an incredibly low incidence of pulmonary aspiration in children that are allowed to drink up until they come to the OR. So this is a study out of Sweden by Hannah Anderson and her team. They allowed their children for a number of years to drink up till arrival to the operating room. And very few of these children had any sort of aspiration event. In fact, I believe they quote their cases as four point seven in ten thousand cases. So very rare. What about sedation? Sedation, right? This is a little bit of a tricky place for us because we know very well that when we give a sedation frequently, we cross that line into general anesthesia. We might be managing with a natural airway. But the patient might not be responding to surgical stimulation. And that really is the very definition of either a deep stem, deep sedation or general anesthesia. This is a group out of Boston Children's Hospital in the United States where they evaluated aspiration events. Where endotracheal tube or LMA was not part of the primary plan. And they found that aspiration events were fewer than one in ten thousand children. And what I find interesting in this study in particular is that children who had violated the NPO times, who were not appropriately NPO, were actually less likely to have any sort of vomiting or aspiration events. The factors that were significant for aspiration were things like gastrointestinal procedure being performed or any sort of airway evaluation or if it was an emergency procedure or if the patient was under a year old. So the debate rages on despite some of the information coming out. And this is just from the last month. This is Nicola Disma and Peter Freikol from Europe, both of them who have done a lot of really great work on NPO times in children. And then my colleague Scott Cook Sather, who loves to sort of go head to head with me and provide a little bit of a sounding board for some of my ideas about NPO time. And Dr. Lerman, who has also done a good deal of publishing on NPO time and his concerns about safety here. So it's interesting, Dr. Cook Sather and Dr. Lerman here both use kind of old data and they really hearken back to the Mendelson syndrome. And they hearken back to the volume of fluid or food in the stomach that is likely to cause an aspiration event. But what Dr. Disma and Dr. Freikol point out is that there are really no published studies that have detected an association between fasting time and the incidence of pulmonary aspiration. And this kind of blew my mind, but in my, in my thinking about it, it's absolutely true. It's a weak link at best. All right. So I want to say also in regards to this, we have gone to a one hour NPO time at CHOP. And my, my review of the cases of patients that did vomit or have aspiration events really corroborates that idea that aspiration is not necessarily associated with fasting time. So the, the evidence for shortened fasting time really keeps building up. This paper by Dr. Schmidt here showed that gastric residual and pH was really pretty much the same after one and two hour fasting time. Hannah Anderson, as you remember from the Swedish study that I mentioned before, found that there was again no difference in gastro residuals. Dr. Newton from the Great Ormond Street Hospital in London published this study in April of two thousand seventeen. Basically using quality improvement to decrease clear fluid fasting time. And then on the heels of this, Dr. Thomas and a number of physicians in Europe released a consensus statement on clear fluid fasting time for elective pediatric anesthesia. And right after that, I want to say maybe a year after that, the European Journal of Anesthesia, the anesthesiology, I'm sorry, released a consensus statement from the European Society of Anesthesiology stating that children who can should receive something to drink prior to surgery up to one hour at least. All right, so there's even more. Dr. Christian Beck up here in the upper left-hand corner did a large multinational multi-center study in Germany, looking at fasting time in children in any relation to aspiration. And found in the centers in Germany that had adopted the one hour clear fluid fasting rule that there was really no difference in aspiration or vomiting events. And then right on the heels of that, she published a study looking at the volume of fasting time. Many of these studies look at a three milliliter per kilo fasting volume given to children one hour prior to surgery. And she said, well, why don't we see what we can do with five milliliters per kilo? And she found no difference here. And this paper released just this last spring by an Indian group also found the same results that five milliliters per kilo of a low osmolar solution is unlikely to produce any sort of vomiting or aspiration event in children. So I want to talk a little bit about caveats here. So there's always going to be the patient who wants to drink more than they should or have too much sugar, have a high osmolar drink. So in this study from China, they looked at volumes that remained in the stomach after D five water ingestion and volumes that remained in the stomach after receiving a high carbohydrate beverage with a high osmolarity. And they did find that there was a difference. A high osmoler beverage cleared after ninety minutes, whereas the D five water cleared well within one hour. So both of these drinks were okay for a two-hour rule, but there are benefits to having a low osmolar solution. And in terms of taking care of thirst in children, they did find that the lower osmolar solution, the D five water was improved, was better than the high carbohydrate beverage. I'm going to shift here a little bit because I want to talk about a beverage that a lot of our patients really prefer greater than any other beverage. And I'm going to highlight the work of these two guys. On the left, we see Dr. Mark Shreiner. And on the right, we see Ron Litman, one of my dear friends who passed away this last year. And they both did a good deal of work within P O time. And I went to them and I asked a couple of years ago, why does CHOP have a three-hour policy for breast milk? When the American Society of Anesthesiologists uses four hours. And I, I want to quote this because I, I, I think it's absolutely fabulous. The limit was three hours because we couldn't convince enough people to make it two hours. And I found this amazingly unsatisfying and, and really wonderful all at the same time. And Dr. Ron Litman told me that the three-hour rule was completely arbitrary based on the fact that his study in the nineties showed that there was some degree of gastric residual volume at two hours. But they both pointed out that that didn't mean that it was unsafe. So they adopted this three-hour rule at CHOP and that has been our rule basically since the nineties. But there's some data behind it. And I, I laughed when I heard from these guys because I was just kind of amazed at the hubris that you can come up with a rule and just impose it. But there is data here. This study on top from India showed that fasting times after milk or clear fluid were not too far different. And frankly, milk cleared from the stomach within three hours. And at the bottom, we had this study out of Japan and they showed that milk and isocalorically adjusted clear fluids like Ensure for children had a similar clearance time in the stomach. And that was less than three hours. And then finally, we see this sort of multi-center study within the United States. Looking at gastric emptying time for children who had consumed liquids of different composition. And they did find that all of these solutions, including milk ensure clear and apple juice were all cleared from the stomach by three hours. So the old guys were right. And I would add that any family with a breastfeeding child knows that their bellies are empty within two to three hours after the last feeding. All right. So let's move on. We're going to talk a little bit about formula here. And this is another area where CHOP has been a little bit more liberal than the ASA since the time of onset. So in our patients, we allow formula for neonates to six months of age, four hours prior to anesthesia. And then after six months of age, we set the time limit at six hours prior to anesthesia. And this was a great study done by Jenny Lee here in the US that showed that gastric emptying times in neonates who were fed formula ranged from forty-five minutes to a hundred and fifty minutes. Averaging around an hour and a half. So what this tells us is that these fasting times for babies are really quite cruel and unusual. Making a baby fast six hours for formula is not physiologically sound. And it's not kind or humane to the babies either. So having presented all of this evidence, I want to say that the two, four, six, eight fasting rules put out by the American Society of Anesthesiologists are fine. But time is relative when kids are thirsty and hungry. And it's surprisingly complex to get children to drink two hours prior to anesthesia. And it's a lot more complex than we give it credit for. These are just a number of the papers that I found looking at actual fasting times when applying the, the guidelines set forth by the American Society of Anesthesiologists. And in this top paper by Dr. Engelhardt, they found that patients were fasted for food twelve hours and for drink eight hours. In William's paper here, they found that the average fasting time was greater than twelve hours for both solids and liquids. And breast milk fasting was about eight to ten hours for children. In this bottom paper by Dr. Burnett Wood, they found that seventy percent of their patients were without food or water for greater than eight hours prior to surgery. So the literature supports that a two-hour fasting policy for clear fluids, even when proactively managed does not result in a two-hour fasting time. It's more, it's more aligned with this sort of eight hours that we're seeing here. I want to talk a little bit about this recent study that just came out last fall. In France, they maintained the two-hour clear flowing, fluid fasting policy, but they sent text messages to, I believe, a hundred and seventy-two patients between the control group and the intervention group. The control group had the usual printed instructions, verbal instructions, but the the intervention group received a text message encouraging families to give their children something to drink two to three hours prior to anesthesia. And they were able to decrease their fasting times to something that I think is probably tolerable, four point three hours. But with that said. It's not entirely clear that this sort of intervention can be sustained throughout the duration. So what did we see at CHOP? We took this on in two thousand seventeen and we found amongst our children preventing, presenting from home for anesthesia, that there was really a bimodal peak in fasting times. We had children who had fasted somewhere around four hours. Then you had children that had fasted somewhere around fourteen hours for clear fluids. Our average was actually nine hours. And that's what you see in the box and whisker plot on the right. And this was just really quite unacceptable to us. We took on a QI project, a quality improvement project. Quality improvement is a really great way to introduce change and affect change in an organization. And do it in sort of a stepwise logical fashion. These, this is the key driver diagram that we used for our study and in our interventions to decrease clear fluid fasting time. And the, the bold arrows that you see here is really what made the most difference for our patients. We presented all of the data about NPO times to our quality and safety group. And we were able to convince them in November two thousand seventeen that fasting for one hour was safe and well tolerated. And I also presented a plan to monitor to make sure that we were still within safe limits. And you can see here that we had a pretty substantial change. We started this with fewer than twenty-five percent of our patients fasting less than or equal to four hours when they presented for surgery. And at the end of this project in two thousand eighteen, we found that greater than sixty percent of our patients were fasted less than four hours prior to anesthesia. So the first intervention that we did, we just tried to give proactive language, which has been proven to help. And we did see a modest improvement. But it really wasn't anything impressive. And it wasn't anything sustainable. And when we dropped the fasting time to one hour in our instructions to the families is when we saw this really marked jump up here to that improvement in fasting time. And just as a little aside here, I don't know how familiar you are with statistical process control charts, but you see right over here. In the spring of two thousand twenty, when COVID hit the United States, we had marked variation in our fasting times. I just find that very interesting. So in the past four years, we really have made a number of changes in our fasting times for children. In addition to dropping our clear fluid fasting time to one hour, we dropped our breast milk fasting time to three hours for all ages. We found that our rule where we cut it off at twelve months of age was really discriminatory against families who chose to breastfeed longer than one year. And it was without merit and without evidence. So we changed it to three hours for all ages. And just recently, we have changed our post pyloric feeding times in intubated patients. And we have essentially said that they may receive feeds throughout anesthesia if the care provider deems that it is safe. throughout anesthesia if the care provider deems that it is safe and reasonable to do so based on the surgical procedure. Obviously, you wouldn't want to do this if you were doing a tracheostomy or some sort of G I procedure, but as long as you are not doing any of those things, it is safe and well tolerated. And I'm really proud of our work. We had a really great team that gathered together. My colleague and one of my best friends, Rebecca Isnerman worked very closely with me on this and she was my co-author on a paper that we published, as mentioned just before. And there are a number of hospitals that have followed suit. Texas Children's is probably the biggest U S hospital that is now adopted clear fluid fasting time of one hour. And then, of course, we have Saint Jude's at the bottom, that is one of our more famous cancer specific hospitals for children. Before I close this discussion, having told you that N P O time has very limited association with aspiration, I want to remind you of things that do have very close association with aspiration. There are patients that really should not have shortened feeding times and that includes patients with achalasia, esophageal stricture, patients with delayed gastric emptying or severe reflux, patients with small bowel obstruction. And finally, the most obvious and perhaps least least recognized patients that have a history of aspiration. I show this picture because this is an actual patient that came to CHOP. This was an actual upper G I study on a patient with a history of tracheoesophageal fistula that was repaired at an outside hospital. He had residual esophageal stricture. But this picture and this study was not available to the anesthesiologist as they proceeded to anesthetize him for hernia procedure. The child did vomit, but due to skilled care, having that suction at the ready, the laryngoscope in hand, the provider was able to prevent a major aspiration event and the patient went on to see another day. So I want to thank you again for letting me speak here about one of my passions, which is eating and drinking. And I'm going to close out with this picture of my goofy children and I would love to talk more about this and answer questions just after we hear our next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. That was outstanding. And I'm glad that other hospitals are following suit with your new guidelines. You may stop sharing the screen now.
All right, I was going to put in one more little plug here. At this point in time, the European Society for Pediatric Anesthesia has finalized the guidelines and they have gone to publication. So we should be seeing those soon.
And that's great. And is it possible for the Society for Pediatric Anesthesia to come up with guidelines for N P O for children? So hospitals can follow that rather than be stuck with the A S A guidelines?
Yeah, and that is, that is something that's in the works. I don't know if you know Priti Dalal at at Hershey in, in, what am I trying to say, Penn State? And she has been working on this with a group in the quality and safety group in the S P A. And she has been trying to get us all together to work on a study to look at fasting times in relation to aspiration. Unfortunately, we live in such a litigious environment that there has been a lot of hesitation to adopt a shorter fasting time and, and they want to see even more data despite the fact that the data to create these sort of restrictive fasting times was based on very little data.
Thanks for that excellent talk. This is Chaya Patel again. We at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta also in early twenty twenty went to one hour clear fasting and I'm happy to report that the patient satisfaction and family satisfaction has been great. No changes in aspiration or mortality morbidity or delay in cases, which we were worried about the most.
That's wonderful. And, and you do, you've done a lot of work in ultrasound. So that's, that's fantastic. And I think that gives us sort of a a nice bit of confidence that the stomach is not going to be full when we, when we go to anesthetize. So that's fantastic.
I have one more question for you now. We have lots of kids who are fed by N J tubes. And this is distal to that ligament of treats, you know. So do they, do they need to be N Q at all, even, even though they're not intubated, but they're coming for an elective procedure? My tendency is to, if they have, you know, we still follow the same guidelines. But every now and then some nurses are smart and they tell you that this is beyond that ligament. So why don't you go ahead and proceed and they want to give the kids continuous feeds? And I think that should be all right. The only thing is you've got to make sure the catheter or the, the G J tube is actually in the jejune. What do you think about that?
I think that's a really good question and we kind of addressed that with our intubated feeding tube population, specifically with trauma patients, because they were losing a lot of weight due to fasting times prior to anesthesia when they had to have repeat trips to the operating room. So our trauma team started putting N J tubes or even percutaneous feeding tubes in the jejune to try to get around this issue. We've had a bit of pushback for this one and I really have been kind of trying to get my colleagues to take this on for some time, not with great success. And I think a couple of things to note here, most kids that are fed by feeding tube are fed continuously as opposed to cavaage or, or sort of a bolus feed. So the idea of having a big bolus in the stomach is really, it, it doesn't apply to this population because they're receiving foods, flu, feeds continuously. So that's one, one item here. And then again, if it's beyond the pylorus, it shouldn't necessarily matter, but I do worry a little bit about the full intestine. As much as we focus on ultrasound of the stomach, I do think there is a little bit of concern in my mind about what is beyond the stomach, because some of the patients that have historically aspirated haven't had anything to eat or drink in days, but they have some degree of small bowel obstruction or pseudo obstruction and they, they are at risk for vomiting and, and certainly at risk for aspiration. So it's, I don't think we have enough data to go there, but if you want to look for really good data, look at the burn population because they've been feeding these kids forever for, for extended times prior to anesthesia.
I think the main reason we haven't switched yet is because of confusion and we not being sure whether the tube is actually beyond the jejune and to make that, to make sure that that's the case, we will need some, some studies or some kind of determination that that's the case. So anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. And I think now in continuation of this newer technologies becoming available and the one that's really taken off by anesthesiologists and anesthesia caregivers is the ultrasound technology, which we're using a lot routinely. And now we are learning how to use it to evaluate fullness or emptiness of the stomach. And Dr. Chaya Patel, who is from Atlanta at the Emory University and she is the, the director of, of the Children's Satellite Surgery Center at Emory is going to talk to us on the role of point of care ultrasound to assess N P O. Chaya, welcome. And you can share your screen now, which I think you have. And you can proceed with your talk. You may unmute. Are you there? Cannot hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Oh, I can hear you. Can you put your slide up again and presentation? Yeah, good.
Okay. So thank you so much for that kind introduction. Thank you, Dr. Bellani and Ica for the invitation. I had no conflict of interest or financial disclosures. So the objectives today is the, to learn about the role of point of care ultrasound to assess N P O, to evaluate for N P O status and risks, satisfy patients indications for a point of care ultrasound in our clinical practice. So as Dr. Elliott mentioned, several European and Canadian pediatric anesthesia societies have recently published guidelines and have adopted liberal clear fluids prior to surgery, which includes one hour. And there is quite a few of the hospital, children's hospital in America that are doing the same things. Pulmonary aspiration of gastric content is infrequent, but is a serious complication when it does occur. The incidence rate is about point oh four to point one percent. So this is where a gastric ultrasound, as Dr. Bellani pointed out, can be used to assess gastric volume and to determine if there's evidence of full stomach, because this is becoming, this is a new hot item in anesthesia right now for, we're using the ultrasound for vascular access to look at cardiac structures. So all kinds of thing in gastric, there's tons of papers, most of them coming from Europe. And you know, now it's catching up in America as well. So gastric ultrasound, the fundamentals. So point of care ultrasound is focused on exam performed at the bedside by appropriately trained clinician. Right now, everyone is diving into it. So we're all learning together on the staff to obtain, it's to obtain diagnostic information that can aid in the decision-making process regarding the content of the stomach. So children who are, that we use less than forty kilos, you want to use a linear probe, high frequency for better resolution. For adults, we use a curvilinear probe. So the positions that are important to us is I'll show you are supine and right lateral ducomatous positions. You place the probe in the epigastric beneath the xiphoid process is the landmark. So here's the gas, the anatomy of the stomach. So as you can see, the antrum is the point of interest to us because it's the dependent portion of the, where the fluids and the content will gravitate towards. So that's what we're looking at in the sagittal pain plane. So here's a supine position. The baby's head is elevated thirty to forty five degrees. Again, we're trying to appreciate the gravity and the dependent portion where the fluid should accumulate. So the transducer is placed in, the linear probe is placed below the xiphoid process. And you scan the epigastrum in the sagittal plane, sweep the transducer from the left to the right in the subcostal margin. And then here's a picture of in the right lateral ducomatous position. So to learn about the anatomy, so to evaluate an empty stomach, what we should be seeing when it's empty is it appears small. It appears flat and collapsed. And the bullseye appearance is important here. So in looking at, here's the skin, the rectus sheath. So you want to identify the left edge of the liver and right underneath that should be the antrum. And then here's the aorta. So again, the same liver, you identify the left edge of the liver and right underneath that is the antrum of the stomach. And then this is again, an empty stomach with the bullseye appearance and the thick wall that's appreciated. So in this picture, we're going to go through images so that we can identify that quickly when we do the ultrasound. So here's a toddler in a supine position on the left and a toddler in the right lateral ducomatous position on the right side. So as you can appreciate, the right lateral ducomatous position is a lot more sensitive in the dependent portion and you see the larger distended thin wall of the antrum, showing you that there's fluids in the stomach. So here it is the same thing. So you identify again, the left edge of the liver, the left edge of the liver and right underneath that is the antrum. So another picture for the memory. And here's the clear fluids again, left edge of the liver and here's your antrum. So you can also calculate cross-sectional area of it to determine the volume status, how much fluid is in there. So here's what a picture of a solid filled antrum looks like. So again, identify first the thing when you scan, identify the left edge of the liver and then identify the antrum right underneath that and you'll see your vascular structure as well. So solid should appeared hyper echoic with a frosted glass appearance. So here's another example of that. Here's the hyper echoic structure with inhomogeneous. And then here's your liver. So I wanted to throw the pictures together for all four of them that you can identify. So here's your empty stomach with the thick wall. Here's with filled with clear liquids. There's the white part is the air bubbles in it. And here's the stomach filled with solid structure. And here's another one with mixed solids after a meal. And D. And the things that this is from gastro cultural sound dot org. And so what we have here, when it's empty, is you're going to see a flat collapsed round ball, bullseye kind of appearance. Stick prominent wall. Solid, it will be round and distended. You're going to see heterogeneous mixture with air. And then clear fluids should be round and distended and hyper echoic in nature. The difficult to differentiate between clear fluids and milk or suspension, but at least you'll be able to tell if it's empty or full. So another depiction of the same thing. Here's empty. Here is one with solid, clear fluids, solids. And so this decision three, this is again from the adult studies as the pediatric studies are still kind of coming up and about. But when you do an examination, if there's no content, then assuming that negative for a full stomach. If there's solid, then you know what you're seeing. And then clear fluids in supine position, you want to double check in the right lateral ducomatous position because that is more sensitive and picking up the fluids. And established one point five milliliter kilogram of fluid on the cross-sectional area is really based on the these that fasting adult in their gastric volume when they studied it. So that's where they get that one point five number from. And some of the studies are more conservative and say one point two milliliters a kilogram as, you know, cut off for induction of anesthesia. So you know, literature coming out, Spencer at L fasted patients for E G D studies. One hundred patients aged eleven months to eighteen years provides with the gastric antrum provided useful information regarding the content. So what they did was a qualitative assessment of the stomach in that they graded it from zero. They had a three point grading system where grade zero was no fluid was visible in the antrum and either the supine or the right lateral ducomatous position. And then grade one was antral fluid visualized only in the right lateral ducomatous position. And then two was fluid visualized in both supine and right lateral ducomatous position. That was considered a risk for aspiration. So this has been validated. And this was a three point grading system for fasting and baseline fluids. Another study coming out of that Academy of Emergency Medicine, the full stomach was a prospective study for age two to seventeen years fasting prior to procedural sedation. This study challenged the fasting time didn't really correlate with the gastric volume as majority of the fasted patients in this study had full stomach at the time of the expected sedation. But these are also kids that had gone through, you know, were seen in the E D, so has had some kind of trauma, even a fall. So that could delay their gastric emptying. So even their fasted gastric volumes were higher than expected. So the clinical implications of that, that gastric ultrasound can provide valuable insight into the nature and volume of the gastric content before performing. before performing sedation or inducing anesthesia. It may impact your anesthesia plan, but the NPO status is unknown. There are some patient population that may benefit more such as the diabetics, the obesity, patients with obesity, hepatic renal issues. And then gastric ultrasound should never supersede the NPO guidelines. I think that's one of the biggest things that we can come out of there of this is that right now it's still not a standard of care. And our NPO guidelines should be the most important thing. And there are more studies need to be done to further validate non-fasted patients that there are increased risk for higher gastric volume before results to guide clinical decision making. So at present, there's no, there isn't sufficient evidence. There is insufficient evidence to support the use of routine use of gastric ultrasound for assessing NPO status. It's not a standard of care. Studies on gastric ultrasound are insufficiently powered to assess safety with regards to aspiration. And then performance of gastric ultrasound is also, you know, dependent, highly dependent on the ultrasound skills of the provider performing the study. So you need to make a conscious effort across all subspecialties in anesthesia for a standardized training in the universally present to apply the ultrasound more liberally. ESA has a course and you can get a certificate for point of care ultrasound. So there are training programs that are coming out for that so that we can all be on the same par for it. There is a lot of potential for gastric ultrasound to be incorporated into the NPO guidelines. But presently it should be used as an agent in decision making for NPO status. And so I wanted to thank everyone and we'll happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Shaya, for doing this. And I think it gives us an added way to evaluate the patients whom we have a doubt about whether proceeding or not. And I think with this, there'll be tremendous benefit to our patients. And I'm sure that we will have the people practicing in India to modify their guidelines. Thanks again, and we will take questions from the audience. Shaya, can you take the stop the screen sharing now?
Done.
Thank you. Now we'll take questions from the audience. Thank you again, both Libby and Shaya, those were outstanding presentations. Being the World Anesthesia Day and since the inhaled anesthetics that first came out were quite nauseating. And one of the first fatalities was, was with somebody as presented by, by Libby. Aspiration occurring following chloroform use. It makes sense that the anesthesiologists came up with guidelines for keeping patients fasted. And it has been the practice for many, many years. And right now, we are trying to fine tune these guidelines because we are finding out, learning more about the physiology of gastric emptying. And I think the pre-op clinics are crucial to figure out which patients where we can actually have to make sure that they have time to empty the stomach, you know, like, like Libby showed patients with with esophageal surgery, for instance, they're not going to empty their stomach or the esophagus easily and normally. So a good assessment of these patients pre-operatively is very important. And the pre anesthesia clinics will help us with that. And the other thing is, you know, with the available of this gastric ultrasound, it makes it a little more precise in terms of when we should proceed and when we should not proceed. Just yesterday, I was taking care of a patient. He was moderately obese and was undergoing endoscopy for problems with his GI tract. And he, he told us that he was NPO. Was fasted for at least 12 hours, actually. And then when they did the endoscopy, we were doing this with a native way with propofol infusion. And then he was on the side and the endoscopist went inside and saw, wow, there are pieces of food there. There's liquid there and was wondering whether he should take out all those particles, you know, all the food pieces. And then I said, are you complete, have you finished your examination? If are you satisfied with what you need to find out? And he said, you know, after sucking out as much fluid as he could, that he was fine. And I was in a dilemma whether I should keep this guy spontaneously breathing. Or should I intubate him and then wake him up fully and then extubate him? So but, but because he was breathing so well and I was using propofol. And he had not even shown any signs of obstruction or, or like he might throw up. I kept him slightly head up. I kept him in his right side position. And I also got the radiographer to come and check his stomach to try to correlate what they found on endoscopy. And what we could see with the, with the ultrasound finding. And as you know, this is a newer technique and even the radiologists are not quite ready to do this. So we as the specialty have to learn how to use the gastric ultrasound and become good at it. And this guy was quite obese, so we were not able to get good images of the stomach. And so the even the expert radiologist couldn't tell us for sure whether the, there was food or whether the antrum was empty or not, even though we knew with endoscopy that he did have food in his stomach. So there'll be situations like this where we are not going to be sure. And then like Shaya said, we have to follow in some, some of these patients NPO guidelines. And knowing more about the subject is, is crucial. And I think by fine tuning it and helping people and being able to remind them even by using texting to make sure that they don't over fast and that they're actually doing it correctly. And then we have to pursue operating room officers of the day and the nursing teams to make sure we stay on schedule. So that there is minimal problems for both children and adults for fasting. So I think with this, I look forward to some other questions if any of the people participating have. Go ahead and either put your questions on the chat. Or Dr. Sanish, can they, can they do it by verbally also?
Yeah, I can enable that.
Okay. I see that Dr. Sandhya might have some questions.
Hi, Dr. Boney. Do you mind if I answer that question? And I'm going to answer a question that you asked about the endoscopy. So I'll go to Sandhya with the question about reflux. Reflux alone hasn't really been, hasn't really come up as a major issue in our patient population. And it's a little bit surprising the things that do come up in our patient populations that put patients at risk for aspiration and vomiting. One of the things that we have consistently seen as I do, I do all of the chart reviews of the aspiration and the vomiting events and whatnot at, at CHOP. ALL or, or cancers undergoing treatment and especially sort of late stage. You know, cancers that have had a number of maybe relapses and whatnot. That tends to put the patients at risk for vomiting and aspiration regardless of NPO status. So you know, not something that you would necessarily think of as a major factor that would predispose them to aspiration, but it keeps coming up. We've had this a number of times. And in terms of the, the patient you mentioned doing the endoscopy. We definitely see more, you know, more food in stomach when we do endoscopy. And we've had a few, no major aspiration events, but we've definitely had some vomiting events in our endoscopy suite at CHOP. One of the things that I find concerning is the obese patient population, I, this is the primary reason why we have not gone to the six hour rule for small meals at CHOP. Because our population is, you know, historically has a high prevalence of obesity. And I'm not really sure they understand what a small meal is. The idea of a piece of toast without anything on it would probably never occur to this population. So I worry that some of the findings when they do endoscopy and they see actual food particles in the stomach. It's not so much that they didn't fast, it's that they ate so much before the fast. But you got to remember that gastric emptying is sort of a, you know, it happens over time. And you know, for clear fluid fasting, it's zero order kinetics. It basically happens as a function of the filling of the stomach. And I would imagine it's much the same for these very large meals. So if they have a huge meal, I'm talking 2,000 calories, eight, eight hours prior to anesthesia, they may still have a full stomach. It doesn't necessarily predispose them to aspiration though, because I, I really think we haven't nailed down what that special factor is. And if anyone finds it, I'll be delighted to hear it.
I think the, you, you hit the nail on the head. It's the anesthesia technique that plays an important role in aspiration. Because I mean, this guy was, had fasted for more than 12 hours because he ate it. He ate his last meal at 8:00 PM. It was a pizza, he said. And then by the time we got to him, it was 10:30 in the morning the next day. But I think if you, if you have somebody that's obstructed, is, is jerking like the chloroform picture that you showed and people are, you know, coughing, not coughing, trying to take a breath against an upper heavy obstruction. Those are the patients that will actually end up vomiting. And so you have to have a superb technique for anybody that you do anesthesia for to prevent this obstruction. And, and if you're, in many, in many cases, you know, the stomach is actually empty, so it's not an issue. But in those where there might be some food that becomes an issue. So many times I will tell my, my trainees that, you know, why not just do a rapid sequence all the time? You don't have to ventilate by mask until they're intubated. You know, there's no reason to if you've oxygenated them well. And, and even for routine cases, I mean, unless I want to verify whether the patient is easy to mask, then I might do it. But otherwise, I just do reasonably in almost all my cases, I do a rapid sequence type induction with a non-depolarizer and it works out just fine. And, and many trainees are surprised that this can be done. I said, well, if you can do it in a situation of an emergency, you should be able to do it in an electric case. So that way you don't get any air in the stomach because they've been breathing spontaneously themselves until you intubate them. And you don't irritate the diaphragm from putting air in the stomach and that can, that itself can, can cause some regurgitation. So, so that, that seems to work well.
I think the GI patients are a special population of patients, right? Because of their pathology. I mean, a baseline they have, they could be considered a full stomach. Yet my partners and I go back and forth about this is should we be using LMA or putting an endotracheal tube in all our GI patients? You know, because efficiency matters too. So it's like which patients do we selectively choose an LMA and risk for aspiration versus, you know, which ones do we do in RSI on? And the other factor that plays into account is sometimes it's just difficult to get a pre-op IV in these patients to do an RSI.
What's, Libby, are you, are you guys doing a lot of gastric ultrasound at your place at CHOP?
Um, we don't do it routinely. Elena Lynn, who is one of my colleagues, does a lot of gastric ultrasound and she does a lot of ultrasound in general. And has published a number of studies with her, her spouse, Aaron Chen about, you know, point of care ultrasound. And, but we don't routinely use it in our clinical practice. And I think one of the things that you said about working with your trainees and why don't we just do an RSI? I think that kind of the underlying theme here I'm seeing and I'm hearing with people that don't have problems with vomiting or aspiration is that this this sort of concern that it could happen in this underlying theme of I am worried that this is a possibility and therefore I am going to modify my technique. Is very important. I, I think people that work with me are very surprised to see that I am always worried about aspiration. In fact, it's absolutely what I do. And they wonder why I'm so liberal with my feeding times. And the answer is I can afford to be liberal with my feeding times because I try to make my technique perfect. And time and again, in various historical studies, anesthesia technique has really shown to be a huge factor in aspiration. So not too much on the ultrasound front as a routine practice, but there are definitely plenty of studies coming out.
And Shaya, what do you think for all of us learning gastric ultrasound? You know, how long it'll take to become experts?
So it sounds like there's a new studies coming out, there's courses that you can get certified. ASA has a course for certification. What I'm reading in literature is about 30 to 35 exams are sufficient to learn the ultrasound technique and apply it widely. But the real question, Dr. Boney and everyone, is we have to realize if this is something that we can utilize, apply clinically versus, or is this just a new toy that we're playing around with, right? Does, does it really decrease the risk of aspiration and mortality more badly? That's what we need to figure out more as we, you know, get this off the ground.
There's a comment in the chat that Elena Lynn and Aaron Chen have published point of care ultrasound. And they use it regularly. And I think we should do that. The question is, can we use that same ultrasound machine that we use for nerve blocks? Does it work as well?
Yes, you should be able to use that. It's mobile and it's convenient and you can take it to the patient's bedside. So I mean, it's something easy to implement. It says, is there an evidence enough that, and is there a time, once you get up to skill on it, then it may not take that much time. But right now it does kind of seem to delay getting patients into the operating room because we're still all learning together. To find that image.
Do you use a specific probe with that? Do you use a linear array or what, what is the probe that you use for it?
So we, the probe that works well for kids less than 40 kilos is linear probe. And then for, you know, larger kids, we're using the curvilinear, the adult size probes. We have used a lot, we have a study going on, on using it on trauma patients, actually. So that should be coming out, you know, I think in a couple of months, we should be wrapping that up.
Good. One thing for the leaders of the Indian college, do you, do you have guidelines for NPO? For India, what kind of guidelines do you all follow for NPO? Any of the leaders can answer this question. Baljit, I see you.
Well, we don't have as such robust Indian guidelines. We are only following the international guidelines of six, four and two. Well, there are some hospitals who have shifted from two hours pre-op for, for children to one hour T F fluids. But this, you know, a lot of people still think it, you know, that it's probably, you know, too short a time. The volume which Dr. Libby pointed out, three ml per kg body weight is fine in case it is just T F fluids. And what I, I, I saw there in one of the presentations was that there is a challenge now to the, to the breastfeed as well from four hours to three hours. We can quantify the food that we can give to children, you know, three ml per kg. With regard to the breast milk, I think quantifying the milk that the child would like to, would like to have may be difficult. So I don't know if either of the two speakers can give us some clarity on, on this sort.
Yeah, Libby, can you tell about the?
Yeah. So as I understand, the question was, what is the volume? And is, is milk acceptable? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So it, it's very interesting. One of the first papers that I came across when I was looking at whether or not milk was acceptable because, you know, so many young children, toddlers, babies, et cetera, they don't, they don't want, you know, they don't want water, they don't want apple juice, what they want is milk. And, you know, the question was, can we can we modify our times? Actually, it was a paper out of India where they looked at children drinking various types of milk, not only human milk, but I believe also, I want to say cows and goat milk. And all of those, even in children, you know, up to like eight years of age, all of those are cleared from the stomach within three hours. So it has been my practice, if I hear that a child had milk on the morning of surgery, it has been my practice to just proceed within four hours because that really does allow me a window and it's a reasonable timeframe based on the evidence in the in the literature. And in terms of clear fluids, you know, it's very interesting because Hannah Anderson and the people in Sweden have allowed children to drink up until the point of surgery. I mean, they they don't stop drinking until they bring them into the operating room. And I don't think they really limit the volumes. But with that said, if you are drinking continuously, you are unlikely to drink a large volume because you're not that thirsty. There's no reason to drink a large volume because you're not that thirsty. So the studies have absolutely validated 3 mL per kilo. And there are studies coming out now that validate 5 mL per kilo. But I would use the caveat that you should use a low osmolar solution such as D5 or diluted apple juice or water itself.
So on the ultrasound examination, what we're seeing is that for fasted adult, based on the adult studies, about 100 to 130 cc's has been what's been accepted as a fasted stomach. And so that comes to about 1.5 cc's a kilo per person. So that's baseline normal.
Okay, good. So one other question for both of you, Libby and Shaya. We we have these kids that they make them drink hyperosmolar radio contrast material and they want to do an enteric exam in the MRI suite right away after that. What do you do about that? Do you all intubate them after this is done or do you just have them breathe with a native airway?
Um, I I can answer that because one of my colleagues has done an extensive amount of work to refine this procedure because we definitely see a few patients that come in for an MRE at CHOP. So what we typically do is we induce prior to giving any sort of internal contrast. So we induce, we place a breathing tube and then we put in a gastric sump or a feeding tube and cavage in the solution. That way, we try to maintain a little bit of a head-up position at that point in time. And then we wait an hour or however long their protocol requires before we do the study. But we we do keep the kids under anesthesia a little bit longer to accomplish this goal. I don't know if that makes any sense, but we induce.
Induce, intubate, put the stuff in and then wait for an hour. Where do you wait? Do you wait back in the operating room or IR or where do you hang out?
Yeah, so we wait in the induction room. We have two induction rooms for our MRI scanners at CHOP. And we typically use our secondary induction room for these patients. And, you know, once we induce and we put in the breathing tube, we we give the contrast. Once we've accomplished that, we typically have a nurse anesthetist sit with the patient until they're ready to go into the MRI scanner. But we keep them anesthetized at that point in time to to ensure that they don't have any reflux or any anything.
Same thing at MRE, Shaya?
So we actually wait to do those cases and then we do rapid sequence and definitely an endotracheal tube. And then after the scan, we decompress the stomach, make sure it's empty and do an awake extubation.
What about India? Anybody wants to answer about India?
We actually wait for some time, at least four hours or so after contrast into the upper GI.
Okay. And the radiologists are okay with that?
Yeah.
Good.
Can I just ask one more question?
Please proceed, Sandhya, yes.
Yeah, I I had on two occasions, it so happened that we had given apple juice to kids about two or three hours before induction. And we put an LMA in both these kids and we put a when we put a gastric tube through the LMA, we got a lot of apple juice back. So it was a little bit of, we were a bit worried about about that. No, no other adverse event happened, but the apple juice was still there in the stomach.
How long after the apple juice was taken?
This was two hours and two and a half to three hours in the one patient, in the two patients.
Did the patient have any delayed gastric emptying or any other things that would?
No, 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 there no, there was no other GI problems. The kids were, they had come on daycare basis and they were undergoing urological surgery, if I remember correctly.
What do you think?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple thoughts on this. One, apple juice, at least undiluted apple juice is a hyperosmolar beverage. And that does fall within the the category of liquids that are not cleared as quickly as, say, water or diluted juice. So that's the first comment. The second comment, and I think you you kind of alluded to this yourself, is that the simple finding of fluid in the stomach does not necessarily mean that the patient will either A, vomit or B, aspirate. But I I like that you did place an LMA and then also a gastric tube. And we've gone to, or at least I've gone to a practice of doing the same thing myself because I find that I'm frequently surprised by the patients that do have something in their stomach. Again, it's the anesthesia technique that matters and I think you did a great job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Libby.
Any more questions? I think I want to thank the speakers for doing an excellent job of this of this controversial, very important topic. It's something that anesthesiologists are well known for. And everybody will ask you, when can we go? What should we do in this case? So at least we are at the forefront and part of this is because of the the Etha Day where we learn a lot about inhaled anesthetics right in the beginning, that aspiration is important and aspiration can cause trouble and aspiration can lead into severe complications. So thank you. And now I request Dr. Baljit to to take over. And I think he will give a word of thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Well, I would say that these were two outstanding presentations by both the speakers. And what a way to commemorate the day for which we have assembled here today. This is a special webinar that we had. Well, you would agree with me that this is one event which changed the practice of medicine forever. And I don't think there's any other more significant an event which has which made difference to the practice of medicine. I mean, we can divide the eras very clearly before Martin and after Martin. And yes, thereafter, you know, a lot of developments took place and where we are today. With regard to the presentations, I I just loved the presentation of Dr. Libby. There was a very smooth flow in her presentation. You know, it was almost seamless as the opinion changed from the moment when they realized that there is something in the stomach which can be responsible for patients' well-being when you anesthetize. To a point when we are discussing, should it be two hours or one hour? And although she very clearly said that one hour is pretty safe, there are still people who view it with some sort of suspicion that maybe it's a bit too early. As Dr. Sandhya also pointed out, that yes, you know, there are some children where it may be where the clear fluid like apple juice may still be present even after two hours or three, two and a half or two, three hours. But well, yes, since there are no studies which have contradicted or opposed the opinion of to us, bringing along the clear fluids to us, I think we we can go ahead with it. Although more and more centers are now taking this practice of shortening the pre-op feeding fasting for children to two hours. With regard to Dr. Chapitel, yes, ultrasound is having more and more application these days, be it epidural space, be it tablo, be it suprachlapular, be it, you know, optic nerve sheath, you know, inferior vena cava diameter and lots of it. I mean, unlike, you know, other investigations where they they give you a very limited sort of fields where they can have application, ultrasound has applications everywhere. And this is, although it has been used, you know, for quite some time, but to assess the the stomach contents, particularly small children. I think this is something new and I'm quite happy and almost encouraged to to do, you know, to have a look at it because when she said that maybe 30, 35 presentations would be good enough in reply to Dr. Balani's question that, you know, when do you think that one, somebody who's doing it would become a sport? That's quite encouraging. Well, thanks once again to both the speakers, Libby Elliott and Dr. Chapitel. Well, friends, this was a special session for the World Anesthesia Day. A feature of every Wednesday of conducting webinars, which we have been doing for more than a year. We'll continue. The next webinar that we have will be starting with the update on intracranial pressure monitoring. And thereafter, we'll have PG debate on precision anesthesia, the first chance in trauma cases. Should it be or should it not be? So this will be will be sort of contest between the post-grad students from two different places. So that's it. I once again thank, you know, not only the speakers, but Dr. Balani for excellent moderating and the speakers for for great presentation. Thank you so much and good night to all our colleagues, you know, in our country and a very happy morning and a great day to our friends across the sea. Thank you so much and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.